Voices from the Road on C-SPAN.
At a town hall meeting in New Hampshire, Donald Trump offered support for those affected by Hurricane Matthew and took questions from supporters. Talk radio host Howie Carr moderated the hour-long event.
Are you ready? Are you ready to speak, to see the next president of the United States, Donald J. Trump? Got some good news in the polls today. As you know, it's gonna, the Boston Globe is choking, but Donald Trump is tied again in the Granite State of New Hampshire. And he's a, he's ahead in the Rasmussen poll, he's ahead in the L.A. Times poll. Things are looking good. There's a big debate coming up on Sunday night, as you know, and we're gonna ask some questions. I've got all your questions here, I'm gonna ask them, but first, Donald Trump wants to say a few words to you. Donald Trump, welcome to New Hampshire. Is that mic working? It's like the presidential debate, the commission, where they gave us a bum mic. Some commission that is, let me tell you. So I wanna thank everybody, this is great. You know, New Hampshire, we won New Hampshire in the primaries, big league, far exceeding the numbers that everybody thought. And now I hear we're winning by one, and tied, and winning by two, and tied in another one. How are you? So I just wanna thank everybody, this is great to be with you. So these just came out, remember, whenever we won, I liked to talk about polls. If we're doing badly, I don't know about polls. No, it's true. When we do badly, I don't know about polls, right? But when we're doing well, I know about polls. I used to drive, Chris Christie's here, our friend, where's Chris? Right over here, a couple ago. And he was a tough competitor, and he said, "You used to drive me crazy when you talk about those polls. Why did you talk about the polls?" I said, "Because I was number one." But if I was number two, or something, we wouldn't be talking. But first of all, thank you, everyone. And New Hampshire was where we had our first victory. You remember that, right? And then we went on to lots of other places, lots of other places. And we had tremendous support from so many of our friends, and tremendous compliments, Tom Brady, and Coach Belichick, and so many people, we just have great relationships with, and great relationships up here. So these just came out, just literally came out. Rasmussen, that's National Poll, Trump, 43, Clinton, 41. Los Angeles Times, National, great poll supposedly, whoa, that's because I'm leading. Trump, 46, National, Clinton, 42. UPI National, Trump, 49, Clinton, 47. Reuters, Ipsos, South Carolina, Trump, 49, Clinton, 44. South Carolina's great. That was where we had another great, I don't know the greater, I'll tell you, the results in South Carolina during the primary were amazing, and it was fantastic, great people. Colorado, Trump, 45, Clinton, 43, I just left, that was a good one. And Wisconsin, where I'm going tomorrow, Wisconsin, they have Trump at 42, and Clinton at 42, and that's okay, because I was about 15 points behind three or four weeks ago, I think, right? So I tell you, so that's one, alright, anybody can check them, you can check them. Now here's one that's a biggie, UPI, just came out, like, a little while ago. Virginia, I love Virginia, tremendous properties in Virginia, a lot of employees, I think all my employees are voting, I'll tell you. Virginia, Trump, 50, Clinton, 45. UPI, UPI, that's a big one, that's a big one. Is there a little surprise? Look at the media, they're going crazy, they don't know what's happening. They don't know, they can't believe this. They're not happy, I wanna tell you, this is not the way it's supposed to be happening. The American people, right? This is not, this is not what they had in mind. The crooked, crooked media with the crooked Hillary. New Hampshire, 48, 48, what's wrong? What's going on here? New Hampshire, 48, 48, I don't like that. That doesn't sound like my friends from, we're gonna win New Hampshire, we're gonna win New Hampshire, we're, we're gonna win New Hampshire. These all just came out, a little while ago. Arizona, 52, Clinton, 42, wow, up by 10. Here's a good one, North Carolina, UPI, North Carolina, Trump, 50, Clinton, 46. Whoa, whoa, look at this one. The state of Pennsylvania, where I went to school, went to college, Pennsylvania, Trump, 50, Clinton, 46. And here's another good one, great state, I love the people, Georgia, Trump, 52, Clinton, 43. Send them back to the press so they can examine them. So I just, I just wanna thank you very much, it's, it's really amazing, and I wanna thank Chris for being here, and all of my friends, so many, Steve I see over here, and all of the friends that I have, it's been, it's been incredible. And, you know, I wanted to be here because we have lots of energy, and we love the people, and we love the people in particular, that because it was my first state, it meant so much for me, and I used to come up, thank you, I feel the same way. But I used to come up, and we used to have meetings with people, and they kept talking about heroin, 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 I tell the story all over New Hampshire, because it's so different than these beautiful little valleys, and the trees, and the lakes, and the beautiful roads that we just rode over. And you talk about heroin, and it doesn't work, it just sort of doesn't seem right, but it's a tremendous problem here, and it's a tremendous problem all over the country, and we're gonna close up that border, we're gonna build a wall. You know, we got the ICE endorsement just yesterday, ICE, great people. And we got the Border Patrol endorsement, and the Border Patrol agents endorsed us, 16,500, and Sheriff Joe endorsed us, Sheriff Joe, tough, Sheriff Joe is tough and good. But getting the ICE yesterday was a tremendous thing for us. So I just wanted to make a quick remark, and then we'll start with Howie, and I know it's very hot in here, and we want to keep this small. And by the way, they were saying, "This is practice for Sunday," this isn't practice, this has nothing to do with Sunday, we're just here because we just wanted to be here. And, you know, Hillary frankly, they talk about debate prep, that's not debate prep, she's resting, she's resting. And I wanna be with the American people, I wanna be with the people from New Hampshire, and she wants the rest, debate prep. Tonight we'll discuss many issues of great importance to New Hampshire, and few states in America have been hurt worse by the trade policies of my opponent, and you know that, NAFTA has been a disaster, signed by her husband. And you've lost nearly one in three jobs, think of that, I mean, think of it, one in three jobs, since NAFTA and China made deals, we made deals with China, World Trade Organization, what a disaster that was, supported by Hillary Clinton, but the NAFTA deal signed by her husband, although he did a great thing two days ago when he was willing to say how bad Obamacare was, that was pretty good, that was pretty good. The open border policies, and I just wrote this out, but I feel it's so important, the open border policies of Hillary Clinton, including catch and release, another terrible practice, have allowed a massive influx of drugs into New Hampshire, and frankly, into states all over our country, almost every state. And it's really fueled the tremendous heroin and drug crisis that we have. We're gonna close up those borders, folks, believe me, and I promise that to you, in New Hampshire, more than anything else, I said, and I talk about it, no matter where I go, and I mentioned this state, because it was really the first glimpse I got at how serious a problem we have. They're poisoning our youth, they're poisoning, more than our youth, they're poisoning everybody, but they're poisoning our youth. It's tough enough out there, our youth doesn't have a chance with what's happening, and we're not gonna let it happen anymore, and we're going to help the people that are so badly addicted, we're gonna help them. So I'm gonna bring your jobs back, our jobs are leaving like you never saw before, record levels, I'm going to stop the drugs from coming in, I'm going to create school choice, and we're gonna get rid of Common Core, which is a disaster. And we're going to create something very special for every disadvantaged child in this country, of which we have far too many. We're going to repeal and replace Obamacare, which Bill admitted this week is a crazy system, can you believe that? Hey, at least he's honest. Boy, has he suffered, can you imagine? Can you imagine that? Has he, has he suffered? But he said it's a crazy system, that doesn't make sense, and doesn't work, and where people end up with premiums doubled, and coverage cut in half. I couldn't have said it better myself, I've been saying it, hey, I've been saying it for two years, longer. I know, I'm gonna put him on the campaign. Oh, I'm sure that, do you think anybody's called him and said, "Let's retract," he did a minor retraction, but you could see he wasn't happy about it. Remember Jonathan Gruber, do we remember the name? I don't ever forget. Jonathan Gruber, the architect of the bill, admitted it was sold on lies, remember that? Sold, he thought he was talking to his friend, unfortunately, his friend turned out not to be such a good friend, because his friend had a little cellphone going, those cellphones are brutal, just like emails are brutal unless you wanna delete them all. Unless you delete about 33,000. But Jonathan Gruber, the architect of Obamacare, admitted it was sold on lies, and talked about the stupidity of the American voter, right? Remember that? The stupidity of the American voter. The only stupidity was that the politicians who ignored the American people and forced this thing, absolutely forced it down their throat, and Hillary Clinton wants to double down, she wants to make it even worse, I mean, that's ultimately what's going to happen. And me, you've seen what we're going to do, you're gonna have much, much better healthcare at a much lower price, and people are gonna be very happy, extremely happy, and we're going to take care of those that are disadvantaged, that can't afford to do what others can't afford to do. But you're gonna be spending, and we're gonna take care of them better than they're being taken care of now, but you're going to have healthcare that works, you're going to have healthcare where companies compete to get your business, and they'll come up with plans that you haven't even seen or thought about right now. It'll be a beautiful thing to see, and I'm sure we'll be talking about it on Sunday night during the debate, because there's no way we'll lose this issue, it's a disaster, Obamacare is a disaster. We're gonna create a more honest government, our government is a disaster, how about the 1.7 billion in cash that was given to Iran? Cash! Remember it was gonna be 400 million? Turned out to be 1.7 billion in cash, you know what that is? That's more than this room, that's, you would put it probably in hundreds, although it was all different currencies from different nationalities, maybe they didn't want American dollars. They said, "Anybody so stupid to make a deal like this, we don't want their money." But can you imagine this, these people? They never saw anything like it. And by the way, that's not going to fight terror, they have plenty of money that they're using to fight, that's going to their Swiss bank accounts, okay? Just in case you had any questions, alright? Anyway, we gave it to them, and boy did we give it to them. So I wanna let you know that we are going to be a country that's gonna be run properly, and I'm gonna be, by the time this finishes, I'll be in for tremendous amounts of money, tremendous amounts of money, that I fund myself. We also have a lot of wonderful people in terms of small donations, and that's coming in fantastically. And we have some people that just feel very good about our country, under proper leadership, but we're spending a lot of money, and we're doing it ourselves, and we're very proud of it, we're gonna be very proud of our country, and when people call up to ask for certain favors that are bad for the country but good for them, the nice part, I don't even have to take their phone call. I don't need them, I don't have to take their phone call. Before we go any further, I wanna send our thoughts, our hearts are with all of the people, and prayers to the millions in the path of what's now known as Hurricane Matthew. It looks like it's a big one, and it's going to be a bad one, it looks like. Hopefully it takes that right turn, but it looks like it's going in the opposite direction, not good. This is one of the strongest storms to hit in many decades, and our neighbors in Florida, Georgia, and the Carolinas are in a direct path, it seems. Southeast Florida has taken the brunt, we have a lot of friends in Florida, a lot of, a lot of buildings, a lot of investments in Florida, a lot of great employees in Florida. Southeast Florida has taken the brunt of the storm. To all of my friends in Florida, please know that we are praying for you, and everyone in the path, you gotta take care of yourself, you've gotta get out of the area, you've gotta listen, you have a great governor, Governor Scott, and you gotta listen, because it could be a, it could be a really, really bad one. So it's gonna be a rough couple of days, and maybe beyond that, but we'll see what the path ultimately is. We've seen the damage throughout the Caribbean, and Cuba, the Bahamas, Haiti, and others. In fact, they say in Haiti, almost 270 people, they think around 270 people have already been killed by this terrible storm. So to the folks in Haiti, and all over, we're going to be helping you, we'll be with you, and we send our best wishes and prayers. We have a tremendous problem that I think is brewing right now as we speak here, so we'll know in about four or five hours, I just spoke to Rick Scott, and Governor Christie just spoke to Rick Scott, and it looks like four or five hours away, so we'll, we'll know. But whatever happens, we're with everybody, because it is, it looks like it's gonna be a very bad one, maybe the worst in a long period of time. Okay, with that, Howie Carr has been amazing, he's been very, I don't know if he's allowed to support, but he sounds like he supports me a lot. I'm not sure that he's allowed to. I'm not sure he's allowed to, but I think probably, but he's certainly been amazing, and he's a very talented guy, and he's a terrific guy with a terrific family. So when we came up and a lot of people wanted us to do this, we said, "Let's get Howie." So Howie, let's go, you have some questions?
I do, and I have a clock down on the floor there that says two minutes.
Okay.
Now, do you want me to call you when it goes over two minutes?
I'll tell you what, I'll make a deal, if I'm doing well, don't call me. If I'm answering the question poorly, please call me immediately, in fact, you could go, you could go in 30 seconds, you could do it, alright?
Alright.
Alright?
Alright.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, the first question, some of these are, I have the names, and if I have the name, I'll just ask the person to stand up. This is Matthew in Bedford, New Hampshire, Matthew, is he?
Where's Matthew?
Matthew here?
Hi, Matthew, hi, Matthew.
Okay, Matthew says, "After the first debate, the media, and even some within the party, suggested that you should have gone after Hillary more. Did you hold back, and do you plan on criticizing her more this weekend?"
Yeah, I did hold back, I thought it was just inappropriate to say what I was really thinking I would say, and I held back, I think for, I think for good reason, I think for good reason. I'd much rather have it be on policy, and I didn't like getting into the gutter, and so I did hold back. I also, I mean, honestly, this was, you know, the commission, the so-called commission on presidential debates, give me a break, did you see where they came from? One of them comes from the Hillary camp, the head person.
How's your microphone working?
This microphone is wonderful. But I had a problem with the mic, we had a guy inside the room oscillating my mic, wasn't it that the mic didn't work? And you know, it's interesting, I went there a little bit before, and I said, "Boy, the mic is so great." Unfortunately, when I went to talk, they turned the mic up and down, and you saw it, everybody in the room saw it, so we had a real problem, and the head of the debate said, "You're right, it was a serious problem," told this to Mayor Giuliani, "It was a serious problem after the debate, an hour and a half." He said, "And now that the debate's over, I'm going backstage to find out what was wrong." I said, "Oh, great, that helps." But I felt that, I really felt that I wanted to keep it on as high a level as possible, let's see what happens, I mean, let's see what happens, I think we're all better off if we can do that, because it is about issues, it is about policies.
You kept it at a minute twenty.
Good.
What do you see as the biggest foreign policy failures of the last 15 years?
Oh, wow, do we have about, what, 24 hours to talk about this? Look, we've had failures at every level, we've had failures, I think the Iran deal's one of the worst deals I've ever seen, okay? It's gonna lead to nuclear weapons. I was with Bibi Netanyahu the other day, and we talked, and we talked about it, and not to reveal what he said, but I will tell you, I can tell you what I said, this is horrible for Israel, it's horrible for our country. It's a horrible deal, because over a period of time, over a short period of time, it leads, within 10 years, and it's gonna be sooner than, they're gonna end up with nuclear weapons, and they have like a path. On top of it, we gave them back $150 billion. We obviously paid ransom for our hostages, obviously, you know, Obama says this had nothing to do, well, why did they delay it until all this money came in? But most importantly, it's just a bad deal, and I'm all for deals, because I happen to think that nuclear is just about the biggest problem that we have in the world today, I think it's one of, you know, Obama thinks it's global warming, I think it's nuclear, in the hands of the wrong players, this is devastating, there's no winner, there's never gonna be a winner with nuclear, believe me. And so I think deals are fine, but they have to be good deals. The deal made by Secretary Kerry, he never left the table, he just agreed, 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 he'd want something, they'd say no, and he'd agree, so sad, but there's one example of a just horrible, horrible thing. We should have never gone into Iraq, should have never gone into Iraq. But of equal importance, or almost equal importance, is the way we got out. Obama took us out with Hillary Clinton, created this incredible vacuum, ISIS was formed, a lot of different problems happened, and totally destabilized. You know, the surge, whether you were in favor of going in or not, the surge really did work, then all of a sudden, boom, and not only that, we announced always, "We're leaving here, we're leaving then," we're, how about Mosul, did you see Mosul? Where they announced yesterday, I'm seeing all about, "We're gonna attack Mosul, we're gonna attack Mosul." I mean, why do they say that? Now, a lot of the bad hombres are in Mosul, the leaders of ISIS, they think, but they're not there anymore because they say, "Hey, wait a minute, they're gonna attack, let's go someplace else." Isn't there an element of surprise? Remember when we were young, and we were studying history, and they're talking about some of the great generals and the great attacks, and it was called the element of surprise? Wouldn't it be nice if we attacked first, and talked about our great victory later? Now, you know, seriously, who's, who's gonna? It's almost like they're wasting their time attacking Mosul, because everyone that we want is gonna be gone. You're gonna have all civilians, and there'll be tremendous death and carnage, but the people that we want, they're gonna say, "Hey, which are the leaders? Get the hell out of here." It's a very, very sad thing. We are being run by people that are incompetent, I will tell you that.
Is Charlene from Sandbergton around? Is she here?
Charlene?
Charlene, there you go.
Hi, how are you?
Charlene says, "Mr. Trump, I'm an eighth-generation American of Hispanic descent, I live in New Hampshire in California, you have my vote, I want to help other Hispanics see the truth." And then she talks about how with the current administration is the border security sanctuary cities are increasing drugs and crime. She says, "Charlene says, what would you say to convince Hispanics who are deceived by Barack Obama, Hillary Clinton, and the biased media to vote for you?"
Well, first of all, thank you very much, and I appreciate it. Interestingly, I was listening, the other day, there was a gentleman who owns a big radio station, Hispanic, mostly all Hispanic callers, and he was arguing with one of the house, he said, "No, you don't understand, the people that are calling in, Hispanics, they love Trump, they're all for Trump." And he said, "I was even surprised, but now I'm for Trump also." You know, I mean, this is happening more and more. I just got back from Las Vegas, where we gave a tremendous, I mean, we had a tremendous crowd of people, a lot of Hispanics, Latinos, they like to be called in that area, you know that, right? Hispanics and Latinos, but we had tremendous response, and just tremendous, it was an outpouring of love, amazing. And you know, people that are here illegally, they don't want people coming across the border illegally, taking their jobs, taking their homes, taking whatever they wanna take. And we want people to come in, I want people to come into our country so bad, but they have to come in legally. You know, we have a country, and we have laws, we have a border, and if you don't have a border, you don't have a country. But I think the biggest surprise, two big surprises, we're gonna do great with African-Americans, you look at what's happening with the inner cities, it's a disgrace, and the Democrats have been running them for up to 100 years unbroken, and the African-Americans, believe me, I think we're doing, and you see how the, the numbers are changing. One thing, they don't have a lot of confidence in Hillary Clinton, she's lied to them for years, she never, she doesn't produce, she does, she just doesn't produce, but I think we're gonna do great with the African-Americans. You look at the poverty in the inner cities, you look at the crime in the inner cities, you look at the education, and there's no jobs, and we're gonna do fantastic with Hispanics, I believe that.
Doing well, doing well.
We're keeping it down, right.
Karen Whitaker, from Sandown, here in Sandown, Karen.
Hi, Karen. Oh, thank you, thank you, I like this audience, I like this audience.
How do you define the income range for middle class? It cannot be based on where you live, because the US tax codes do not discriminate based on geography.
Well, look, the way I look at it, the middle class has been forgotten in this country. Taxes are too high, jobs have been taken away from you, a lot of our companies, a lot of great companies have left our country, they've gone to Mexico and other places, China is making so much of our product, we don't make product anymore anywhere near like we used to. And I will tell you, it's such a great question, because our middle class has been treated so badly by the politicians, I mean, it's like forgotten, and we're lowering taxes, as you know, way down for the middle class, we're changing the tax structure completely. We had seven brackets, now we have three, and we're bringing it down, actually, for those making not a lot, it's zero, and we don't want them to send in, because that's huge bureaucratically and extremely costly, but we're bringing the rates down to numbers that are much lower, you've seen the numbers, much lower, and you're gonna have a much lower tax base. Hillary Clinton's raising your taxes way up, I don't even know what she's thinking, she's raising, we're already the highest tax nation in the world, just about, they can maybe find, every once in a while they'll say, they'll fact-check me, well, no, there's a nation that you never heard of, where it's slightly higher. We are just about industrial, of the industrialized nations, we're the highest taxpayers in the world, we're the highest tax nation in the world. Our business taxes are gonna be brought from 35% to 15%, we're cutting regulations which are absolute, we want regulation for environmental, we want regulation for safety, but the regulations are massive, Howie, they're massive, and we're cutting the regulations at a tremendous clip, and I would say 70% of the regulations can go, it's, it's just stopping businesses from growing. And I think you're gonna see a tremendous change in this country, we're gonna see jobs come back, we're gonna see companies come back into our country, and right now, they're just leaving, it's a one-way street out, we have a one-way street right out of the country, and they're going largely to Mexico, I know the places, but Mexico is the eighth wonder of the world. I tell the story a lot, I have a friend who builds plants, and he builds these massive plants, and he says, "Donald, you have to see what's going on in Mexico." I said, "How about our country?" He goes, "Not so much." We're gonna switch that around a little bit, and we'll get along great with Mexico, by the way, but we've gotta switch that around. It's been a one-way highway out of the United States.
Is Kaffa Sea in Londonderry here? Kaffa Sea. Kaffa. "I recently graduated magna cum laude with a BS in chemistry, and I'm having a lot of trouble finding a job. What's your plan to bring jobs back to America?"
Well, that's the biggest problem, and that takes place with so many, and, and even though it's over 100 degrees in this room, don't feel, but you know, this room was not meant for this many people, you do know that, right? I heard the other night, I was making a speech, and we had tremendous massive crowds, and it was really hot, so I'm a little warm, and there might have been a little bit of sweat, and one of these dishonest people said, "Donald Trump was sweating tonight." I said, "Sweating?" It was 100 degrees. And guess what? We're all sweating tonight also, right? That's okay, that's good, that's healthy. The biggest problem you have is people go to college, I mean, that's great, getting out magna, that's fantastic, that means real smart, but people go to college, they work, they borrow money, they're up to here, they're up to their neck in debt, and then they get out and they can't get a job. I mean, it's such a massive problem, they can't get a job, because our really good jobs are gone, and they've gone to other countries, and so many other countries are making our product. I wanna see the day when you could get those great marks and that incredible profession, which you love probably, or you wouldn't have been so high up in the class, right? At the top. But I wanna see the day when we can have those jobs back in this country, at the highest level. I wanna see the day when Apple will make their iPhones in this country, instead of making them in China, and Vietnam, and all over the place, okay? And believe me, if I'm president, that's gonna happen, and I use Apple as an example, but in all fairness, Apple makes all its products all over the place, they're not making them here, mostly in China, now Vietnam, which is becoming very strong for this. Now Vietnam, which is becoming very strong for this. They're going to stop making them here, they're going to stop making them here. We have the people, we have the most unbelievable people. If I learned one thing in going around, because we started on June 16th of last year and I've gotten to know the people. And we have by far the biggest rallies that people have seen, far bigger than Bernie. And he was second, but far bigger. Now Bernies aren't so big, by the way, they're very small. Bernie made a big mistake, by the way. Bernie, Bernie Sanders would have been legendary if he didn't make a deal with the devil. When he made that deal, his stock went way down. It went way down. I mean, honestly, even as somebody that is, you know, disagrees with him on a lot of things other than trade, we agree very much on trade, very, very much on trade. Except I'll do things about it because I like free trade, but I want to make a great deal free trade. But he was right on trade because our country is being ripped off on jobs, on everything. But we're going to have a country that makes product again. We're going to have a country that Apple and these other great companies are going to make their product in our country. And we're going to have lots of people working, including yourself. We have to do that, okay? Thank you.
Is Bob Swanson here? Bob Swanson?
Hi Bob.
This is one of my favorite questions. When you become president and you, can you assure the American people that you're going to clean house from the top at the FBI, Justice Department, State Department and the VA? And in what order would you start?
Well, I guess we'll be talking about this for a while to come, but I have to tell you, it's one of the saddest things I've ever seen happen to our country. What's happened with Hillary Clinton, where you send emails, where they send a subpoena and they want all of your emails. I mean, if you're in private business and you do what she did, it's called the who's gal, okay? They, the United States Congress, Congress sends a subpoena wanting emails. And she gets the subpoena and she deletes 33,000 emails. And did many other things, including lying all over the place. And you see people who have suffered greatly, including General Petraeus, for doing a tiny fraction of what she did. That's only because we're not going to, we can't stay here all night and talk about. But the lies she told to Congress, the lies she told to the people, but the lies she told to Congress. And then you see an FBI give her a no tape, no anything, no swearing in. I believe they said no swearing, you don't have to even swear in. And they questioned her on the 4th of July. And then they released their finding on Labor Day, on, right before Labor Day, when everyone's gone and gone, they're gone here, they're gone there. I, I think what's happened with respect to, because I have such respect for the people in the FBI and I have such incredible respect for the FBI. What's happened to the FBI and to the Justice Department at the highest level? Honestly, I think it's one of the saddest things I've ever seen in this country. Whether we like it or don't like it, to look at what's happened and to look at the way that's been handled. And you know, every time I speak, this is mentioned, the subject, the people are going crazy. The people of this country are very, very angry, very, very angry. And I, I would think, I don't know this, but I would think that some of these great FBI agents and the people that work within the FBI, I would imagine they are just furious at what's happened to the reputation of the FBI. So I mean, I think it's an amazing question. Honestly, it's like we're a third world country. It's one of the saddest things that I've ever seen happen in this country. And it happened to justice and that's probably, I guess, the way you feel also, right? You know, it's very sad.
Let me ask a quick follow-up. What would you do with Comey?
I just am very disappointed. I mean, you know, when he read the charges and he's going, one, two, three, four. And I'm saying, wow, they're going to do the right thing. And then he goes essentially, however. It was, I mean, it was amazing, it was amazing to go after point after point. And that was only a few of them. So it's very disappointing, it's very disappointing.
Sharon Osborne from Auburn. Sharon? Sharon, for the conservative holdouts, Mr. Trump, who are not on the Trump bandwagon yet, what can you say to convince them that your support for traditional conservative issues of free markets, the Bill of Rights and the rest of the Constitution mean they should endorse you?
Well, you know, we don't have too many, Howie, I'll be honest with you. You know, the press likes to report. You have some of these long-term people that have done such a bad job. You look at, look at the problem our country's in. I would never use these people and they know that. So then you, they announce in a group that they're going over to Hillary, right? You understand. And they announce in a group. But you know, we have tremendous support, including a couple of you very distinguished folks from New Hampshire who were against me, who are now for me. And you're allowed to announce the names, but we have tremendous support in New Hampshire. One of them was very tough and very smart, go ahead.
Johnsonunu?
That's true. I'd watch him and I'd say, boy, he's tough.
His son is four points up to me.
Oh, that's good, well, that's good because I'm a, I mean, I, I thought it was terrific. I met him the other day and father and son. And I think, I think they're great people. But he was tough. I'll tell you what, he was, he was really hunting for Trump. And you know what? I respect somebody that can go the other way. It's not that easy, a pivot, as you would say. But I very much appreciate the Sununu family and the fact that they are with me and I am with them. And they're going to do very well, he's going to do very well. And I, I see the numbers and, and you know, one of the things that have really happened, they all thought, oh, Trump, because look, I've never done this and, but I've done very well in my life and business and done a lot of good things and, but I've never done this. So all of the reports, well, you'll take down the senator and he'll take down this senator. Do you know how well the Republicans are doing? I guess there's a gentleman in Illinois that's not doing so well. This guy was actually taking out ads against me. I said, are you sure he's a Republican? Maybe he's a Democrat. And he's not doing well, but hey, that's his problem. I mean, you know, he was not for me, but if you look at, and he was, that was for political reasons. But if you look at what's going on, now they're all talking about, in fact, the other day I saw, very interesting, one of the announcers, you know, Donald Trump is having a very positive effect on these races. The Republicans are going to hold, they're doing terrifically well, far better than anyone thought. And frankly, we are winning states and we're going to win some states that would never in a million years, you know this, be in play. I mean, we have some states like we're doing great in Colorado. Somebody else wouldn't do well, nobody else would do well. We're doing great. I think we're leading Colorado on one of the polls, as you know, just came out. We're leading Colorado. I just left. We're leading a lot of places and, or doing at least very competitively in a lot of states that absolutely would not be for Republicans. And you know, one of the funny things, they do the maps. And remember two, once ago, I'd watched the different people that do the maps and it's a very small path. It's tougher for the Republicans, I have to tell you. But they said, there's a very small path. But I was watching the other day and the same person was saying, wow, this path is getting a lot wider. Doesn't mean they were happy about it, but the path now, there's four different paths. Before there was one little one.
Nate Silver.
Well, Nate Silver's been, you know, he didn't predict us in the primary and he had never called a loser before. I mean, you know, he's always been on the right side of, of what happened in terms of at least his predictions. And he didn't predict me in the primaries and in all fairness, you know, never seen me, never spoke to me, never saw what we did. You know, we had 17 very talented people. And one by one by one, it was a beautiful sight to watch, wasn't it? Beautiful. And by the way, Howie, those people, most of them endorsed me. Ben Carson, Chris Christie, so many of them endorsed me and their great endorsements. Scott Walker has been incredible.
He helped Pence.
He helped Pence too. Mike Pence, by the way, has been fantastic and he did a great job last night. He's been, did a great, he did a great job last night.
That brings me to another question from Lois from Brentwood. Lois?
Thank you Lois.
Did you really say, Lois asked you, were you upset about Mr. Pence's debate success? As John Harwood said?
John Harwood was the worst moderator out of all the debates we had. How many did we have, 11 or 12? He was so bad. This guy knows nothing about me. I was so happy. And I saw today that somebody on CNN, the Clinton News Network, who knows nothing about us. You know, they use John King actually, he's a nice guy. I like him on the maps, he does a good job with the maps. I like him better now than I did a couple of months ago because a couple of months ago I had no chance. Now all of a sudden, that map is getting very red. But John King said, you know, they always have a source, they always have a source. A source within, nobody talks to him, nobody's talked because he's like the enemy, he's like the enemy. But he said, and a few other people said, Donald Trump was at first happy and then he was unhappy because Mike Pence did so well. I said, unhappy? We're jumping up and down, he was so good. And I'll tell you what, he's a great human being. He's a, you can't root against him, you can't. But I was telling Chris, I was telling Chris, Chris, I said, can you imagine these people are saying that I would have loved to have, you know, seen them not do well because that makes me look better? These people, that's why a guy like John King has stayed in the same position for like, how long has he been at CNN? They, I used to say, I think someday he'll be an anchor. Guess what? He's still doing the maps. But, but no, I was so happy and I, I mean, I can, I can give you my word on this. I was so happy that Mike did well. And I was rooting him on and we were talking all during the day and I was giving us some ideas and we were running things by each other. And it's so disconcerting when you hear, even tonight, they said, Donald Trump is going to New Hampshire to practice for Sunday. This has nothing to do with Sunday. And it's like they make you into like a child. And this has, I love the people of New Hampshire. This was set up a little while ago. They were going to cancel it and I said, why are you going to cancel it? Well, you want to debate prep. I said, forget debate prep. I mean, give me a break. Do you really think that Hillary Clinton is debate prepping for three or four days? Hillary Clinton is resting, okay? She's resting, she wants to build up her energy for Sunday night. And you know what? That's fine. But the, the narrative is so foolish. I'm here for one reason. I love the people of New Hampshire. I said I was going to be here and I'm here. Very simple.
This one, this one is unsigned, but it's a good question. What advice would you give to young Americans looking to achieve the American dream?
Always go into what you love doing. And you may have parents that are trying to push you one way or another, but you know what you love. You have to do what you love. And I say this all the time, I say it in speeches and everything. I mean, I, I'll speak in front of young people because I love doing it. And I say, always follow your dream, always go into what you love and never, ever quit or give up. I've seen a lot of people over the years, big people, not so big. Usually it's not so big because if they quit, they're not going to get so big. But the most successful people I've ever met are the people that never quit, they never give up. They just don't take no for an answer. So do something that you really love doing because then it's not work and never, ever quit or give up. All right, do one or two more. Thank you.
I think you've, I think you've dealt with this one before. It's from Al Baldassaro over there.
Hello Al.
Al, stand up Al. Al wants to know what you're going to, Al wants to know what you're going to do about the VA. How are you going to make it possible?
Well, the veterans, as Al can tell you and as a lot of the veterans in this room, because I recognize some of you and, and I've become very close to the vets. And a lot of it started with New Hampshire, to be honest, and Iowa. But I really got close to the vets and I'll tell you what, in many cases, they're living in hell. What's going on with the Veterans Administration between the corruption, the long, long waits, 22 suicides a day. I, I thought that was a typo. When I heard 22 suicides a day, I said, that's impossible. 22 suicides a day. Much of it caused by the fact that they can't get to see doctors. Howie, they wait in line for five and six days and at the end of the sixth day, the doctor says, sorry, you know, I'm going on vacation. And actually, the Veterans Administration and the vets tell me this, they have some really great doctors. But getting to see them is sometimes almost impossible. We are going to solve finally the problem of the Veterans Administration. We have illegal immigrants that in many cases are treated better than our great veterans. And you know that and everybody knows that. They're being treated better than our veterans and that's not going to happen. One of the things we're going to do is the lines are impossible. Getting to see a doctor is in many cases, just days and days. When that circumstance happens, we're going to let our veterans go across the street, around the corner, two miles away and see a doctor, private or a hospital, public or private, where they're looking for work, where they have wonderful people and they're looking for work. Take care of their problem and we will pay the bill. And that's going to be the cheapest thing we can do. It's going to be the cheapest thing we can do. And Al can tell you and a lot of the vets that I recognize in the room, they can tell you, everybody's in love with the plan. And we're going to keep the VA, but we're going to, we're going to keep the Veterans Administration. We're going to keep the hospitals, we're going to keep the buildings. Because I think that's important. You know, we have to take care of our vets. These are people that we wouldn't be here if it weren't for the vets. But, but when they're waiting in line for, and they know it's, there's no end in sight. And honestly, they're dying. They need a simple procedure, they need a prescription, they need something very easy and they end up dying. And it's a very sad thing. So they're going to be able to go across the street to a public-private hospital, to a doctor and we're going to take care of our vets for the first time. We're really going to take care of our vets, okay?
Is Pete from Nashua here? Pete from Nashua. Pete from Nashua says Hillary Clinton wants to give Social Security and Medicare to illegal immigrants through citizenship. Won't this bankrupt the programs?
Well, let me tell you, you've heard that and most people didn't even believe it, but that's true. And you know, she's open border, she wants people to just flow through. Look, when the Border Patrol agents, 16,500, N1 ICE, when they come out and they've never endorsed a presidential candidate before. But these are great people that want to do their jobs. You know, it's much harder for them to do their jobs than to just stand back. Right now, it's stand back, let them in. It's much, and catch and release, which is a disaster. But when they want to do their jobs and it's much more difficult and they come out and endorse Trump, who's going to have them do their jobs? And we're going to build a wall or we're going to stop things from coming in? Look, we're going to stop. And this was the pledge I made to New Hampshire, more than any other place. Because this is where I really couldn't believe it. But I said, if I win and if I become president, first get the nomination, that happened. Become president, I promise the people of New Hampshire that we are going to stop this crap from coming into your state. 100%, 100%. And it can be done and it can be done even before the wall goes up. The wall is a necessary edge. You know, I asked the patrol, I asked really the ICE folks that endorsed me and I asked the Border Patrol folks that endorsed me. I said, how important is the wall? And you know, I'm so committed to the wall, I was pretty sure they were going to say this, but I wasn't 100%. They said, Mr. Trump, it is absolutely necessary for us to do our proper job. Which made me, you know, gave me a little additional security as far as the wall is concerned. We need the wall. We have to stop the drugs, heroin, but many drugs. But we have to stop the drugs from pouring into our country. And believe me, it is poisoning our country and it's poisoning our youth. And we're going to stop it and we're going to stop it fast, long before the wall gets up. We're going to start their wall fast. I get them built fast. But I'll tell you, long before, we are going to stop that poison from flowing into our country. Okay? One more. We'll do another question.
I'm going to ask you, I'm going to ask you the kind of question Hillary Clinton gets sometimes. I mean easy here, right?
She gets easy ones.
That's what I mean.
You ever notice, by the way, did you see the difference? I'm getting boom, boom, boom with her. What would you do to fix the economy? Now, of course, that's actually a much tougher question than you would understand. But, and she doesn't have a clue, but you see the questions I was getting.
Laura from Hampton, New Hampshire, are you here? That's Laura.
I thought you needed a fun question.
I thought you needed a fun question.
Let's have a fun question.
"What is one of your earliest memories as a child, and why do you think it stands out?" And then she says, "Go, Donald."
Thank you, thank you. I think just the relationship I had with my parents. You know, my father built houses in Brooklyn and Queens, and apartments, and he was a very good negotiator. I'd sit at his knee, and it wasn't that he taught me, he didn't really say, "Son, you have to learn..." But he'd be on the telephone negotiating with a plumber, or an electrician, or a sheet rocker, and I would hear this, and I'd be playing with blocks at his knee, on the floor, and I'd be listening, and it just, it was always so vivid, and he was always negotiating. And you know what? That's what we need in this country, because people are running away with our country. You look at what's going on, whether it's the border, whether it's our depleted military, the greatest people on earth are military people, but they have old equipment. You saw the piece they did on many of the networks, where they show fighter jets where they're 18 years old, they're so old that they don't make the parts anymore. These are fighter jets that our people are flying now, and they have to go into plain graveyards. They have to go into graveyards to get parts, and they have to go into museums to get parts, 'cause they don't make the parts anymore. No, we need a strong military. We need to protect our Second Amendment. We need to take care of our vets. We need borders. We need great education, getting rid of common course, so important. We need so many things. And by the way, one thing, and I know Johnsonunu and a lot of other people felt this was so important when they came out so strongly, United States Supreme Court. We need, we lost a great justice, Justice Scalia, great justice. We need great justices who are going to uphold our Constitution. And if Hillary Clinton gets in, you're gonna have a much different country. So, so many people feel that's so important, I personally feel it's one of the most important things, defense always being, we have to defend our country. And we have to stop people coming in from parts of the world where they're looking to do us harm, believe me. And they're pouring in, and Hillary Clinton wants to have them come in at a rate of 550% more than President Obama, we are going to stop it. And you know the statement, "We are going to make America great again," and it's gonna happen quickly. So thank you very much, everybody. Thank you.
I got one more question for you, Donald. I'm gonna let you read it, and remember where you are tonight as you answer this question.